Certainly do the preamble and start the meeting on time. And then you can tell us about any technical difficulties you might be having. I want to welcome everyone here today, this afternoon, to our Board of Health meeting. Members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live by the city of Hamilton. Most of the time, apparently, we're having some trouble today. Temporarily archived on the city's website. Other individuals in media may also be audibly or visually recording this meeting. A reminder that all electronic devices are to be switched to a non-audible function during our committee meetings. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda and any technological issues you want to report?
No, we have Board of Health up and running on our web streaming. And Public Works has recessed for the moment, so we should be live on the internet. We're having a little problem with Google Slides behind us. So they're trying to fix that up for us. And we do have a couple of changes to the agenda. So we have added delegation requests from our friends at Mill Grove Public School respecting a food recovery program from stores and farmers for the benefit of the food bank, and that is for today's meeting. That's a delegation request that came to us from Emergency and Community Services. And we have a delegation request from Kate Flynn of the Food Advisory Committee respecting the food strategy implementation process for Priority Action 1, which is item 8.1 on the agenda. And we have a general information item, correspondence from the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care respecting 2017 Public Health Funding and Accountability Agreement indicators.
Okay, thank you. For the benefit of those that are here, we're going to hear the first, I think, the three delegations that are before the Board of Health, and then we'll likely recess again and go back into Public Health just to get that in. So a motion to approve the agenda, as suggested, moved by Counselor Farrar, seconded by Counselor Marula, all in favor. Counselor Partridge, you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move a motion, Mr. Mayor, to move the Mill Grove Public School student presentation regarding the food recovery program up to first on the agenda, please.
Okay, moved and seconded by Counselor Green.
Seconded by Counselor Green, thank you.
All in favor? I'm going to hope that the technological difficulties have been somewhat sorted out. If not, we can do other parts of the agenda until they are. Do you want to give me a word on that?
I have it on my computer. Oh, it would be blocked on my computer, too. Sorry.
While they're sorting that out, members of Board of Health, any declarations of interest? Hearing none, Counselor Johnson?
Yes, I do, actually. Delegate 6.1, delegate 6.2, and item 8.2. It deals with sugary drinks. My husband works for Coca-Cola.
Okay, thank you. Don't think the clerk heard that, but we'll remind her when she comes back. Any other declarations of interest? Hearing none. A motion to approve the minutes of May 15, 2016, moved by Partridge, seconded by Skelly, all in favor. Carried. A motion to approve the delegates that are before us today. This delegation, Mill Grove, as well as Kate Flynn, Food Advisory Committee, and the, what else was there? All the other ones that are there. Motion to approve, moved by Counselor Whitehead, seconded by Counselor Conley, all in favor. How are we doing technologically?
We're almost there.
Almost there. Okay, I can only stretch so far. I hear there was a lively Public Works meeting this morning? Counsel Partridge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just to fill in time, perhaps I could just say a few words with regards to the Mill Grove students that are going to be presenting to us. I know, Mr. Mayor, you had certainly attended the school a couple of weeks ago and had met with the students and had the pleasure of seeing their presentation. And I've been attending at the school a couple of times over the last two weeks, first to hear their presentation, and the second time to really talk about what were some of the other agencies that they could tap into to have a conversation with, and one of them certainly was Hamilton Food Share. So it looks like we're at that point now of doing the presentation, and I'm absolutely delighted to welcome the Mill Grove students here. You folks rock. You work so, so very hard, and my council colleagues will be able to see that with the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me add, you know, I saw such a spectacular presentation a few weeks ago that I said, you know what, the rest of the Board of Health and council needs to hear this, and want to commend Jennifer Kershaw and her great leadership and the passionate students that made a brilliant presentation. I'm sure they're going to do it again today. So, students, the floor is yours.
Hello, Mr. Chair and Counselors. We are here to tell you about the Mill Grove Chase the Future Project. What's the problem? Eighteen percent of Hamilton lives in poverty. That's about 96,000 of us that need help getting food on the table. Some food banks only allow people to come once a month because they don't have enough donations to let them come more often. The food banks only get 10% fresh fruit and veg, 12% bread, 2% dairy, 1% meat and eggs, 65% non-perishables, and 10% other things, such as pet food. A grocery store throws out 30 to 45 large bins of perfectly edible food each week, and all these people need help getting food. Why can't that food go on their tables, not in the landfill? What happens to food in the landfill? Methane gas goes into the air we breathe, and toxic lichate exorbs into the groundwater. The best before date is not the expiry date, it's just a guideline. We did an experiment, and we brought in foods past the best before date and watched them. They were still perfectly good to eat. What's our big idea? Our plan for Hamilton was for Hamilton to put trucks on the road and take food from the grocery stores and deliver it to the food banks, and the food banks can help poor people in need of food.
So I'm Elena, and I'm going to be talking about our business plan. And in our research, we found the Hamilton, City of Hamilton's priorities, and our project would apply to four of them. Community engagement and participation. Our project would empower all citizens, especially those trying to get back on their feet, and it would drive them to be more active citizens in our city. Economic prosperity and growth. When all Hamiltonians have enough food to eat, they can save their money for other essentials, such as shelter and clothing. Healthy and safe communities. This project would give more opportunities for fresh food in the food banks, which means that there's more chance that people can have a healthy diet that matches up to the Canada Food Guide. Clean and green. Our project would divert food from the landfills, so it wouldn't have a chance to create greenhouse gas emissions. We also found Hamilton's food strategy plan, four goals. Number one was to access to healthy food for all. By bringing more food to the food banks, it means that more people has access to it. Promote healthy eating and healthy food knowledge for all. If we don't, not everyone has enough healthy food, how are we supposed to teach healthy food knowledge? Eat and grow local food. We know that community gardens help people, but it doesn't provide enough food to feed all of the hungry people in our city. We found a new food resource in grocery store garbage. Healthy, sustainable, and fair ways to handle food with partners at all level of government. Our plan would ensure groceries that food is being handled safely by training people at the food banks to handle short-dated food. So it would make grocery stores more comfortable with donating it. But we're missing something big. What about food recovery and waste diversion? There are problems, and we need to deal with them. So what are our expected outcomes? After my friends and I came up with this idea, we started our research. And in our research, we found the Montreal Supermarket Recovery Program, and we used it as our model study. The Montreal Supermarket Recovery Program, or SRP, was very successful, so they expanded it to the province of Quebec. And just this past March, the province of British Columbia has started doing this. And right now, the province of Ontario has $600,000 designated to this program. So we want the city of Hamilton to be next. We can predict that we will, there will be a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. We think we can reduce greenhouse gases by 3,000 tons each year. That's the same as taking 650 cars off the road. We think that we can recover large amounts of food. We think that we can recover 3.8 million kilograms of food each year, which is an enormous amount that could be feeding the 96,000 hungry people in our city. We think we can create jobs in Hamilton, because we would need people to handle the short-dated food at the food banks, and we would need people to load and unload the food, and we would need people to drive the trucks. And the extraordinary thing they found in Montreal was that less people fell into poverty, because they weren't worrying about getting food, but they were saving their money so they could keep their home and get clothes on their backs. So how are we going to fund this? So we think money from the Waste Management Budget, because waste diversion does fall under that topic. And community and business donors, which is where most of the Montreal pilot projects' money came from, just people who heard about it and supported it. And grants. We found all sorts of action plans that support projects just like ours. And we now have the Ontario budget, $600,000 for the SRP. The Green Municipal Fund, which funds projects which will make our city greener. The OAFB Capacity Building, which helps food banks get the money, sorry, get the space that they need to handle all of this fresh produce. The Recycling Council of Ontario, which helps get wasted products back into the circular economy. And we'd be taking food that's wasted and putting it back into the circular economy. And the Hamilton Future Fund, which funds projects that will make Hamilton's future and present a better place to live. And the Hamilton Community Foundation, which will make our communities a better place to live. So who supports this? Federal and provincial government. We know that climate change and building a circular economy has been talked about, and if we did this project, then we would get one step closer to helping climate change and one step closer to building a circular economy. The city of Hamilton, we know our vision statement, and we know our mission statement, and it matches up to our project. The food banks, their goal is to get food for people who need it, and this project would get food for those people. And the citizens, we started a petition, and we had over 1,000 signatures by the time -- now we have 1,400 signatures. By the time that the mayor came to our school. And Retail Council of Canada represents 97% of our grocery stores and supermarkets. And a quote was that, "As long as the food can be donated, there's no reason it shouldn't be." So what are our next steps? So we need to amend the food strategy plans, that it includes a plan for waste, food waste, and diversion from retail. We need to help create partners between stores and food banks, otherwise, how is this going to happen? We need to get a campaign that teaches people about best before dates. We need training for food bank staff so that they can properly handle short-dated food. And we need money, maybe another truck and people power. Thank you for your time. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't know about the rest of the members of council, the people here, I'm sure they're proud parents, but wasn't that a fantastic presentation? And not only well presented, but they have a business plan to boot. How much better does it get? So I'm amazed. You guys are, for all the right reasons, you're here, I think, presenting something that's very important in our community, and we thank you for that. Questions specifically of the presenters? Counselor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for coming in, Jennifer and all the students. But Mike, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor. And the first one is, with the two of you, were there other students that helped you on this project?
Yes, I'd like to welcome them all.
Why don't they all stand up? They were part of the presentation there. Please stand up.
Thank you very much. And I'm just so darn proud to be your counselor and to see you in here today presenting. And I'd really like all counselors to listen to the conversation going on. It's just so very important what these students have done. So a couple more quick questions. Can you tell me, in your research, you talked to different food banks? Can you name some of them?
We talked to the Neighbor to Neighbor Center.
Right.
And we talked to Hamilton Food Share, which led us on a great path.
And I was--
And the Flambrow and Water Down Food Banks.
Yes.
It was very good, and--
Some grocery stores as well, I understand.
Yes. We talked to farmers, grocery stores, and other, like, restaurants, a lot of places that food could be wasted in.
Right, excellent. Counsel Partridge?
Yeah, and thank you so much. It's really, the research that you've done, and I want to commend you and the other students up there as well. How long have you been working on this project?
Six months.
And it was six months of good research. You talked to a lot of people, including the Flambrow Food Bank and the Water Down Food Bank, and I was very honored to be present the day that they met with Hamilton Food Share last week and had a very, very good conversation. And I don't have any more questions, but perhaps others might. But I want to thank Jennifer very much for all her work, and the principal of the school is here as well. And put your hand up, wave to everybody. Yeah, thank you so much.
Well done, thank you. Counselor Green?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And it's often the case when we have such incredibly talented and confident young people at council, I always ask them the following question. So I'm going to ask both the presenters and the students present, have any of you ever considered running for office in your future?
No.
Do we have hands? I saw the bow tie, I thought maybe-- Hands up if you ever considered being a politician. Amazing. Excellent. I have the young lady, too. I asked that question, Mr. Mayor, because we have the privilege at this table for the Board of Public Health, but also on all of the issues that are going to affect your generation. Those decisions are made here, and so I ask you guys at this stage in life to think about being a part of government, so you can bring your incredible ideas and wonderful talent to government to be able to solve these problems. So if you haven't thought about it before, to the little girl and little boy who thought they might be elected officials, or maybe be public health professionals, or anything here in the city, we'd love to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brenda Johnson?
Yep, thank you, and thank you very much for the presentation. It really, really was excellent. My question to you is, you said you talked to restaurants, you said you talked to some grocery stores. Did they ever tell you why they're not doing it now?
Um, yes, because they always thought that they couldn't donate, but they didn't know that there's a law called the Good Samaritan Law. So even if you do donate and someone, and they get sick, if you're meaning to do a good thing, you don't get hurt.
That is amazing. So did you tell these people that you met with about this Good Samaritan Law?
Um, yes.
And what was their response? Did they say, "Oh, good, now I can donate"?
Well, they are not that happy with it, because if you think about it, why would they want to get their own trucks? They think they have to get the trucks, but they don't.
So they're more worried about how they're going to get the food there? They probably don't have--
Yeah.
They don't have a problem with donating, they just can't get the food there?
Yeah, because they have to get more money from their customers to pay the people there. They don't have that money to--
And did you get the same response from the restaurants? Like, I believe Tim Hortons throws all their baked goods out at the end of the day. Did you talk to--
Well, yes.
Yes.
But Tim Hortons isn't actually that bad. Every, every Christmas, they give all their food to Women's Shelter.
Yep. They're very good, you're right. But I didn't know if they knew of this program to do this every day, all the stuff that they usually throw in the green bin.
Well, some recycle it, some feed it, some give it to the zoos.
Okay.
They get rid of it in ways that are responsible, but some don't.
We're waiting. They're getting queued.
There's another sign up.
Okay, go ahead, hon.
So one of the reasons that grocery stores aren't donating right now is because they're worried about donating their short-dated food, because they're worried that at the food banks, it's not going to get handled properly and someone could get sick.
Okay, thank you. And thanks again for your excellent presentation and all the research you've done on it. You really sell well-informed. And thank you to all your support system up there that helped with you as well, including your mom, and thank you for the teacher. That was just amazing.
Thank you, Counselor. I've got Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I am very thoroughly impressed. Children today are leaders of tomorrow. And I want to also reflect that it takes a good team to understand all the issues and six months of research and study. I want to thank the education system, the teachers and administration who helped facilitate this. And I got to think, there's no prouder moment than not only the teachers, but the parents that are here today and those aren't here, to hear such a very comprehensive presentation that hits on all the major principles and points. So I want to just thank you.
All right, good, thank you very much. Accolades all around. Can you guys just embrace all of that? Counselor Pearson?
Mr. Mayor, yes, thank you. And certainly, I will echo all the positive comments. Absolutely phenomenal. I'm so impressed by all of you. And, you know, it's great when you start at this age, because you've certainly had something tweak inside you, not only in your head, but in your heart, of what can be done out in the community. But what really amazed me in what you mentioned in your presentation, and I just want to ask if you plan on carrying it further, is the fact that products that have best before dates does not mean that it's no longer good at that date. So what was the, sort of, the feedback that you got from, say, Food Share and some of the food banks that you visited? Because I have concerns that they believe best before dates, they actually do put that product in the waste. So maybe, could you enlighten, what was Food Share's opinion of that?
So when Food Share came to meet with us, they told us that they actually have everything that they need to put this program in place, like the trucks, and they have the refrigerators and the warehouse.
So they're supportive of keeping products past the best before dates--
Yes.
--as long as the product is evident that it's still in good condition, correct?
And they also want people to be trained to handle the short-dated foods, that it can be handled properly.
Wonderful, I'm glad to hear that. And I'm hopefully encouraging that you can carry this information forward and that you involve more food banks and get your message out there even broader. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And you know what, while you're still here, so maybe I could turn to our staff for a second and just ask, I know that we're, food strategy studies coming up, I think, in December. This is certainly an initiative that's worthy of not only exploration, but implementation, I would think. But anyone can speak to kind of where the food strategy research is and what we can expect this to actually go to then as part of the review?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for the question, and thank you to the presenters this morning, this afternoon. I'm a little out of myself. Yes, you're absolutely right, we can reflect that in the report that will come forward in December as part of the overall food strategy. We've had some initial discussions about the information being presented here, and we'll happily incorporate it in the review.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Partridge, follow on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to move a motion, when appropriate, to refer the presentation and the suggestions to our staff to be considered and included in the food strategy coming forward in December.
Okay, thank you. Moved by yourself, seconded by Counselor Whitehead. You have a thought?
Just a thought, and as we do that, and because closure is always a great thing, whatever comes out of the future reports, the food strategy, and certainly with the consideration of what we hear today, I hope that we can close the loop with the teachers and the students at the particular school to understand the final decisions of council. Thank you.
Thank you, we will absolutely do that. You'll be the first to know, that hopefully, that we can say, yes, we've got a program in place, and we're going to follow up with these good ideas and put them into practice, because I think that's the objective here. So thank you, all of you, all of the students up there and parents for coming out today. Teacher Jennifer and your passion for this and your guidance, this is, I think, a real demonstration of how everyone can make a difference in this world, and you're doing that here today. So thank you so very much, and we will get back to you shortly and let you know what next steps are. All right, thank you. Bravo. Thought they were going to take a bow there for a second. I think that's a good thing. All right, we have a couple of consent items and then a couple of delegations. So if I could, kind of work our way through, we approved the delegations, we work our way through the consent items. So the first one is 5.1, if there's no questions or comments, a mover. And a second here, moved by Johnson, seconded by Conley, all in favor. Carried on 5.2, Bill C. 37, Supervised Injections Sites, a follow-up report on next steps. Any comments? Counselor Pearson, move it. Seconded by Counselor Collins, all in favor. Carried. And a final one, 5.3, Families First Pilot in Hamilton. Report is there, any comments or questions? If not, a mover and a second here. Moved by Counselor Farrar, seconded by Counselor Whitehead, all in favor. Carried. Now we have heard one public delegation, we're going to hear now the delegation regarding the Canadian Cancer Society respecting the reduction of sugary drink consumption through municipal policies. And again, thanks. So we will welcome Rakshan Cameron to the podium to make a presentation. Not sure where-- There we are. How are you doing? Of the Canadian Cancer Society. Floor is yours, sir.
Okay, so, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Rakshan Cameron, and I'm here today on behalf of the Canadian Cancer Society as a public issues volunteer. I also live in Hamilton, I live in Ancaster. So I would like to thank-- Oops. So I'd like to thank you all today for the opportunity to speak today about why reducing overconsumption of sugary drinks can have a major impact on body weight, and why it's important to consider interventions to support this goal at all levels of government. CCS is Canada's largest national health charity. We are dedicated to finding new and better ways to protect the health of Canadians, shrink cancer rates, and reduce cancer's toll on our country. As Canada's leading cause of death, cancer is the very definition of a nationwide health issue. About two in five Canadians will develop cancer in their lifetime, and about one in four Canadians will die of the disease. Cancer cases are projected to climb by almost 40% in 2030. And in 2016, an estimated 29,000 people died of cancer in Ontario, and 77,000 new cases were diagnosed. These statistics speak for themselves. More than ever, governments at all levels need to take action to prevent cancer before it starts. We know that about one-third of all cancers can be prevented by eating well, being active, and maintaining a healthy body weight. Besides not smoking, having a healthy body Besides not smoking, having a healthy body weight is one of the best things Canadians can do to prevent cancer. The Canadian Cancer Society is concerned about the health of residents in this city and about the health of young people. Over the past 30 years, childhood obesity rates have tripled in Canada. And in Ontario, over 60% of adults and 20% of children and youth aged two to 17 are overweight or obese. From a cancer risk perspective, we are concerned because if children who are obese remain obese as adults, they are at increased risk for many chronic diseases, including cancer. Obesity increases the risk of at least 11 different types of cancer, including breast, esophageal, uterine, et cetera. So we need to put Ontario on the path to better health. With sugar sweetened beverages or sugary drinks being the single largest contributor of sugar in the average Canadian diet, it is important to address this issue directly. The average total intake of sugar among Canadian adults is approximately 110 grams per day. That is the equivalent of 26 teaspoons or 21% of the total energy intake based on a 2,000 calorie per day diet. The average Canadian youth drinks 578 milliliters of sugary drinks each day, which can contain up to 16 teaspoons or 64 grams of sugar. This puts them well above the recommended sugar maximum of no more than 10% total daily calories. There is a link between obesity and increased risk of cancer, but unfortunately, the majority of Canadians, 70%, do not know this. A recent study commissioned by Heart and Stroke, CCS, Diabetes Canada, Childhood Obesity Foundation and the Chronic Disease Prevention Alliance of Canada looked at the impact of sugary drinks in our health and the healthcare system. The new research from the University of Waterloo suggests that over the next 25 years, sugary drink consumption will be responsible for more than 3 million cases of obesity, 100,000 cases of cancer, 1 million cases of type 2 diabetes, 300,000 cases of heart disease and almost 40,000 strokes. It is projected to also result in over 63,000 deaths and cost the healthcare system more than $50 billion over the next 25 years. We cannot ignore these alarming numbers. The causes of obesity are complex and encompass social, economic, physiological, environmental and political factors. Tackling obesity requires a comprehensive approach and no one policy option will solve the increasing incidence of obesity in Canada. These include ensuring access to safe and free water, restricting food and beverage marketing to children, public education, better food labeling, revisions to Canada's food guide, modifying food environments to make the healthy choice, the easy choice, and implementing economic levers to make unhealthy choices less attractive and healthy choices more affordable, including introducing a levy on manufacturers of sugary drinks. Finally, CCS would like to applaud your leadership in wanting to address this issue. Policies that create a supportive, healthier environment can and need to be adopted by all levels of government. Today, you all can be trailblazers in healthy eating. Hamilton can work towards limiting availability of sugary drinks at city run facilities and continue to educate residents about the risks associated with sugary drink consumption through public awareness and education campaigns like the Water Does Wonders campaign. Hamilton can also endorse leadership, can demonstrate leadership by voluntarily complying with the Healthy Menu Choices Act. Listing calories and nutrition information on menu boards is a powerful tool in giving consumers accurate information to make informed decisions. Hamilton can also use its voice to support regulations restricting marketing to kids at the federal level, including written support of current federal legislation being discussed and support of the Ottawa Principles with the Stop Marketing to Kids Coalition that calls for restrictions on all food and beverage marketing for children and youth aged 16 or under. The city could also lend its support to provincial and federal campaigns, supporting a sugar drink levy with proceeds going towards healthy living initiatives. This opportunity could include endorsing a call to action for the federal government to introduce a levy on manufacturers of sugary drinks in Canada. This call to action was launched in March by Heart and Stroke, CCS, Diabetes Canada, Childhood Obesity Foundation and the Chronic Disease Prevention Alliance of Canada. It has been supported by 20 other organizations nationwide, including Middlesex London Health Unit and Elgin St. Thomas Public Health. The promotion and adoption of policies that create a supportive and healthier environment where we live, work and play is an approach that we at the Canadian Cancer Society support. Regulatory actions that are citywide and extend beyond city run facilities would go a long way in creating a supportive and healthy food environment. These include restrictions on free refills, limiting size of sugary drinks and mandating water or milk as the default for kids' meals. These policies have been introduced elsewhere in the world. For example, France banned free refills and several US cities have mandated a default of water or milk for kids' meals. I urge you to consider these options and I thank you for your time and your attention to this important health issue. The Canadian Cancer Society is ready to support you in your actions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rakshan, very much for your presentation. And we know that there's a report coming a little later on in the agenda that we will pay attention to. Are there any comments or questions of the presenter? Hearing not, Rakshan, thank you very, very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for your passionate advocacy, very important. Members of council, we have another presentation from Lucy Florio, Diabetes Canada. Lucy is here, there we are. Welcome, Lucy. Same topic, sugary drinks, reduction.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Lucy Florio and I'm a born and bred Hamiltonian, living here my whole life and growing up on the West Mountain. Today, I'm here in my capacity as a health promotion coordinator at Diabetes Canada. I work to promote health and prevent illness and have worked with residents here in Hamilton for over 18 years. My organization is respected internationally for our focus on evidence-based guidelines and policy. I'm a mother of two children and volunteer at their school and I'm also the daughter of a woman living with type 2 diabetes. Sometimes, when considering complicated health and social policy issues, those perspectives don't align and there is some conflict in fully understanding the problem and the breadth of the solutions. In this case, there is not a conflict. When it comes to the changing health of our community and specifically our children, we need to act on evidence-based policy solutions and we have the moral imperative to act now. But it seems overwhelming in terms of all the reasons we are at this point, as well as the potential solutions, the magnitude of the health challenge is great and it is increasing and Hamilton is sadly worse off than many other jurisdictions. Conditions such as obesity and diabetes have been rising rapidly. There are almost 57,000 new cases of diabetes and 7,000 new cases of heart disease in the Greater Toronto-Hamilton area each year. In 2009 and 10, the percentage of Hamiltonians who were overweight or obese was 60%. This is, this rate is higher for Hamilton men, 69%, than for Hamilton women at about 51%. But both are higher than provincial averages for their sex. And obesity often starts early in life and tracks into adulthood. In Canada, we know that the rate of children who are overweight or obese is at 30%, which is one in three children. One of the most sobering statements I have heard came from the former Surgeon General in the US who said, "Because of the increasing rates of obesity, unhealthy eating habits and physical inactivity, we may see the first generation that will be less healthy and have a shorter lifespan expectancy than their parents." Over the past 30 years, obesity rates in children and youth have almost tripled, as my friend with the Canadian Cancer Society also mentioned. These higher rates of obesity coupled with less active lifestyles have now contributed to a diagnosis of type 2 diabetes in children, a disease previously associated only in adults. Anecdotally, one of our pediatric endocrinologists said that in his practice today, probably 10% are children with type 2 diabetes. Our children deserve better. These children with type 2 diabetes can also have high blood pressure or high cholesterol. They are on an unhealthy trajectory for the future. Overweight and obese kids are likely to become overweight and obese adults. They are at higher risk for complications like kidney failure in the future, heart disease and stroke. They face a far bleaker outlook than adults living with the disease because they live with it longer. In 2014, 7.9% of Hamilton residents reported having diabetes. That's 36,958 people or about a stadium full of spectators. This means the absenteeism rate, cost to employers for benefits and the hospitalization rate for diabetes are higher than the Ontario average and creates a burden not only on our healthcare system, but on the Hamilton community as a whole. Diabetes and chronic disease are a burden on productivity and cost employers and we can try to change this. What we eat, most importantly, impacts these trends. To put it simply, you can't outrun your fork. And Canadians are eating too many foods that are high in fat, salt and sugar. We know that Canadians are among the highest consumers of sugar worldwide, with only nine other countries consuming more sugar per capita. And sugary drinks are the single greatest contributor. As you know, one serving can contain 40 grams or up to 10 teaspoons of sugar and youth on average drink over a half liter of sugary drinks each day, which can contain up to 16 teaspoons or 64 grams of sugar. Sugar sweetened drinks have little or no health benefits, just a long list of health risks. They are significant driver of chronic weight gain, obesity, type 2 diabetes and many other chronic diseases. These products are unique in that sugary drinks do not provide the same feeling of fullness as solid food for the same number of calories. So individuals do not compensate by eating less. People who regularly consume these drinks often gain weight as a result. One to two servings per day increase your risk of type 2 diabetes by approximately 25%, even at a healthy weight. This is worth repeating, a person who regularly drinks sugary drinks is at a higher risk of diabetes even if they don't gain weight. A growing body of research shows that sugar sweetened drinks get quickly absorbed into the bloodstream, leading to a spike in blood sugar, which the body is not well equipped to handle repeatedly. If we can reduce sugary drink consumption, we can significantly reduce overall sugar intake and reduce health risks. In previous months, you heard from my colleagues who outlined the huge quantities of sugary drinks being consumed in Canada. Intake is well above recommended limits and is putting our communities at risk. So what can we do for a complex health and social problem? We don't find ourselves in this mess for one single reason. Thus, I can assure you that there isn't one step solution and indeed, we never said there was. A successful approach will require interventions at the individual level, meaning education and food skills, but more importantly, at the community level, like the changes that are being considered by the city of Hamilton. We are also working very hard at the provincial and national levels of government to institute change. Diabetes Canada is proud to work with our partners to encourage all levels of government to create healthy food environments. We are advocating for better labeling on foods, restrictions on foods and beverage, marketing to children and a levy on sugary drinks with revenues from the levy to be used for healthy eating initiatives. Health, Hamilton is at a pivotal intersection. We applaud the sport of health for acknowledging the issue of sugary drinks and tasking Hamilton Public Health with analysis. We strongly support the recommendations outlined by the Heart and Stroke a year ago. Interventions to ensure that water and milk are the default choice for children's meals will make the healthy choice the easy choice. Banning free refills will start to denormalize the cheap and frequent overconsumption of sugar sweetened beverages. And we've seen these interventions applied elsewhere and we hope that Hamilton is next. Together with provincial and national level legislation to support healthy food environments, we can make a positive change. A good example with successful results exists in tobacco control. Smoking rates in Canada have been cut more and, have been more, have been cut more than half thanks to a comprehensive strategy which included restrictions around how these products could be marketed and sold along with education and taxation. We need that same comprehensive strategy around nutrition and in particular, sugar. It will take a concerted effort, just like those for tobacco reduction. This will require elected officials at all levels of government to act boldly. And we support you to do just that. Thank you for your strong leadership to date and I hope you will seize this opportunity ahead to help make Hamilton a healthy place for our families and a true leader in public health. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for your passionate presentation as well. Any questions of the presenter, councillor Whitehead?
Yeah, I'm going to be a bit of a contrarian in order to challenge it, doesn't mean it's where my thought process is. But you know, a lot of civil libertarians will tell you that governments need to keep their hands out of people's personal lives and personal lives are about choice. So I, I accept the fact that the federal government has the responsibility to ensure food safety in the country. I also believe that what they've approved is a matter of choice and the real tool is education. So for example, I'm thinking of, we've had issues of, you know, whether we should ban peanuts from the, it's football stadium, Tim Hortons Stadium. That's a Hamilton facility. Forty thou, or you know, what is it, 25,000, 30,000 people attend. If we adhere to these policies, then that choice from all those attending would be taken from them. What do you say to that?
I would say that you're exactly right, education is the key. And just as we've taken away smoking from all the public places, because we know that the research is there of how it can affect individuals, the research is there also with the sugary drinks. And I think there may be some pushback initially, but otherwise, if it's for the good of their health, I think there's a way for us to educate the public that they realize that water would be the best thing.
Yeah, I think the difference with smoking is, is that smoking can impact others because of the secondhand smoke where a drink only affects the people that are actually consuming it. So it's a little bit of different analogy between the two issues. I think the, the, the issue or the challenge I'm trying to reconcile in my own mind is choice. We are now having government come in and basically say, we're going to limit your choice, local government. Is that a role for local government to play?
To limit the choice? Well, there's choices that are limited all the time. With garbage collection, you've gone down to, you can only collect one.
Public health that needed to be dealt with, which was an in camera item, is that correct? Food strategy implementation process for priority, there's that one. And then the other one was the in camera item. I mean, if that's the case, then we may be able to wrap this up right now. Right, yeah. Because, well, I know we can un-recess, I'm pretty sure we can un-recess and then go back into public health. Finish it off, we've got a lot of good staff sitting here, we can get them back to work. Sorry? Yeah, that would be great and they would be, so a motion to un-recess recess. Moves by Kelly, seconded by Farr, all in favor. I'm going to go back to. Yep, okay. Is it an absolute requirement that we livestream to finish this meeting? I know we should, but is it an absolute requirement? Sorry? Okay. All right, so we are back in session, members of council. We have item eight one, which is food strategy implementation process. If there's no need for a presentation, I'll take a motion to approve.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, we do have a delegate who has been approved for today to speak to the report.
Okay. All right, that changed the matter, we didn't know that. Okay, let's, let's then have our delegate, which is, who's the delegate?
Kate Flynn from the Food Advisory Committee.
Okay, if you could come forward, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Members of council, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I will keep this very short and sweet, I promise.
I appreciate that.
My name is Kate Flynn, I'm a local farmer and I'm also a member of the Food Advisory Committee for the City of Hamilton, which I am representing today along with a couple of members. a couple of members of the audience. The Food Advisory Committee is a citizen advisory committee within the City of Hamilton. The purpose of the committee is to advise city stakeholders, in particular, members of council and city staff, on food issues and support the implementation of Hamilton's food strategy and its vision to create a Hamilton with, quote, "a sustainable food system where all people at all times have economic and physical access to enough safe nutritious food to meet their dietary needs and their food preferences." The Food Advisory Committee would like to convey our full support for the Food Strategy Implementation Process for Priority Action One Recommendation Report, which is in front of you today. We believe that it helps satisfy Priority Action Number One of the Hamilton Food Strategy to, quote, "create a formal, transparent process for requests for municipal funding for community food programs as they arise at any City of Hamilton Subcommittee Meeting or by council via council motions, delegation or staff direction." The Food Advisory Committee believes that the Food Strategy Implementation Process for Priority Action One Recommendation Report will help create a fair, flexible and impactful funding request process for food projects in our city. We also believe that it will help better enable the transparent and efficient allocation of city resources. It is our hope that council will accept the Food Strategy Implementation Process for Priority Action One Recommendation Report as it is presented today and address the, and in order to address the first priority action of the food strategy. As a whole, the Food Advisory Committee is excited to move forward in collaboration with city staff and council members to address the remaining priorities in the food strategy to create a more food-secure Hamilton together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions? If not, can I have a motion to receive that presentation? Moved by Skelly, seconded by Vanderbeek, all in favor. Thank you so very much for being so crisp and brief. I appreciate that. And, uh, item eight one, food strategy implementation, can I have a motion, please? Moved by Counselor Skelly, seconded by Counselor Marula, all in favor. Carry it. We have, uh, any motions? Any notices of motion? Uh, we have a private and confidential item twelve one. It's in your agenda package. If there are no further questions on it, then a motion to approve, moved by Marula, seconded by Skelly, all in favor. Carry it. Thank you. Any other items that we need to discuss, hearing not, motion to adjourn. Moved by Ferguson, seconded by Vanderbeek, all in favor. Carry it. Thank you all very much.